Good evening. We're calling the West Covina Planning Commission meeting to order for October 22nd, 2024. We're going to start with the few moments of silence in meditation, and then we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. That'll be led by Commissioner Hang. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joanne, will you give the roll call for the Planning Commission? Commissioner Basara?
Here.
Commissioner Hang?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Chair Williams?
Present.
The record show all Planning Commissioners are present. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes. We have two sets of minutes, the first being from the Commission meeting of June 25th, 2024, and August 13th, 2024. Are there any changes or comments from any of the Commissioners?
I think there's some corrections that have to be made to the June 25th draft. I think it's missing some sections, so... I think there were some motions missing from the items, or if city staff could look at the video one more time and to make sure we put all the motions and everything that was discussed that day.
Okay, so you want us to carry over the minutes from the June 25th meeting?
Yes, and then I think there's some wording, for example, I think one motion was about possible revocation, and then it says initiated revocation proceedings. Well, the motion was for possible revocation, so I think we have to make sure that it corresponds to our actual motion.
All right, I had one correction for the meeting on August 13th, 2024. Under the oral communications, it should actually read, remove mayor and put resident Brian Tabatabai. We have noted that, Chair. Oh, okay. If there are no other corrections, then we would like to have a motion, at least for the minutes for August 13th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion. Motion to move it, move it.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll make the second. Joanne, would you take the roll call? Commissioner Basara? Oh. Commissioner Lewis?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
I think there's more corrections that have to be made, so no.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Okay, the motion failed. The motion fails. So, at this point, then both minutes from June 25th as well as August 13th will be continued to our next scheduled Planning Commission meeting. Chair, if I may? Yes. If the Planning Commissioners have any corrections, they can be sent to me via email. Thank you. We have one public hearing item. I'm sorry, went across. We're at open communications. At this time, I have one speaker card. This is the time when the public can address the Commission on anything that is not agendized for this evening. I have a card from Mario.
Good evening, Planning Commission and members of the public. I'm here today to address something that has been on my mind and as well on the minds of many residents who attended or watched the recent City Council meeting. During that meeting, Brian Gutierrez, who also serves on this Planning Commission, spoke at length about why he was unable to attend the recent candidate forum. Brian stated that he was deployed to help with disaster relief for Hurricane Milton on the East Coast, and that's why he couldn't attend the forum. However, there's something that doesn't quite add up. On the same day as the forum, just a few hours earlier, Brian held a town hall meeting at Merrill Gardens less than a mile away, where the forum took place at Hurst Ranch. That town hall was scheduled for 2:00 p.m., and yet the candidate forum was at 6:00 p.m., just a short drive down the road. So my question, Brian, is simple. If you were available to hold a town hall meeting earlier the same day, why were you unable to attend the forum just a few hours later? I think the residents of West Covina deserve some clarity here. You have often referred to the people of West Covina as your constituents, and you've been very vocal about your commitment to them, even during previous Planning Commission meetings, when discussing matters like the sale of alcoholic gas stations. You've been quick to speak up and take a stand, so I'm sure you'd want to address this apparent discrepancy. The thing is, if you had just stayed silent, like you did when you ignored the invitations to the candidate forum, this wouldn't have been an issue. But instead, you chose to stand before the City Council and formally address the council and the residents with a statement that doesn't align with the facts. To stand up and deliver a blatant lie is more than disappointing. It's downright troubling. There's a saying, "Better to remain silent than be thought a fool than to speak and to remove all doubt." By coming forward with a misleading explanation, you've done just that. You've removed all doubt. As a Planning Commissioner, someone who plays a role in shaping our community, we need to be able to trust your word. If there was a reason you couldn't make it to the forum after the town hall, I think it's fair to ask you to share that reason with us. Otherwise, it appears you were deliberately misleading the public, and that's unacceptable. I'd like to hear your thoughts on this, Brian, and I'm sure the other Commissioners would as well. It's important for us all to know where you truly stand, not just on your policies, but on transparency and honesty with the community.
Thank you. We have another card. Steve Bennett?
Good evening, Planning Commission. It's been a little while since I've spoken in front of you guys. I'm here tonight to address an issue as well. I actually agree with Mario. I think Commissioner Gutierrez has a lot of explaining to do. I think that he has lied to the public way too many times, but I'm here to address a different issue. Brian, I believe about a month ago, you called me to, I'll call it intimidate me, to stop speaking out against you in the conversation with something along the lines of you were afraid for your life because people were posting the article about you having possible ties to a drug cartel because of your time as an executive vice president at Dell Records, into which there's a picture in a newspaper article of you arm-in-arm with the executives that you served with at that Dell Records. And you can look up at me anytime you want, Brian. I understand you want to ignore this, like everything else, so just please keep looking down at your phone, which, by the way, you shouldn't be playing with during a Commission meeting. I also want to address the fact that during that conversation, you kept saying, "I will follow the law," that if Tony Wu does anything wrong, I will report it. Where's that at, Brian? Because I'm pretty sure there's some things you could report now. And if you're so lawful, why are your yard signs in city medians along Garvey Avenue next to the freeway wall? Why are they on the fence in city public property? And then we find out, as Mario pointed out, and there's a video about it, that you weren't even out of town for a hurricane. And I apologize to the rest of the Commissioners, because Brian seems like he's getting picked on tonight, but when you deceive the public like Brian does, and when you openly lie to the public, and you tell voters at their doors whatever they want to hear, even though it isn't true, those lies eventually come out, like the one for the candidate forum. Like the fact that you called me what I thought was intimidation. You were trying to get me to stop speaking out against your candidacy. You were trying to get me to not put out things that were publicly reported in a newspaper. And I felt that that was very unethical of you, Brian, for someone who seems to want to follow the law. And again, you're welcome to look up at any time, or you can just keep ignoring me. It doesn't really matter. I'll keep talking, kind of like you did on the phone. But Brian, I ask you, do the right thing, become ethical, maybe a stretch. Become ethical, do the right thing, and bow out like you did when you ran as a Republican candidate in 2010 against Roger Hernandez. Letty will keep you as a Commissioner. You'll still be involved, just like Roger probably got you appointed as a Commissioner then. Coincidence? I don't know, maybe. But Brian, you ignored the public at a candidate forum by not showing up, and you were in town. You called a resident me to try to intimidate, and I don't appreciate it, and I'm here tonight to make that public. Good night, Commissioners. By the way, nice family. I hope they get what they need. You guys take care.
Thank you. We have another card. John Shoemaker?
Kind of interesting to hear about the phone call. I've gotten three of them. One was the first time he published something, I think it was back in 2017 or 18, that he said he made a phone call, and he stopped Food for Less from leaving West Covina. They never had any plans to leave West Covina, because he saw a real estate ad for a small portion of the building there, and he called him and said, "How dare you try to move out." Their response was, "We're not." So he published that he stopped them. And when I put that on there, I got a phone call from him saying that if I didn't desist immediately and stop spreading those lies, he was going to sue me. My response was, "Go ahead. Go right ahead and do it." Then the next time it came up was during COVID, that he got up in front of the City Council and said, "I've brought the COVID vaccine to West Covina. I made a call to CVS, and they're going to bring it in in two weeks." Only problem was, there was an article in San Gabriel Valley Tribune that, three months before, they said when they were going to bring it in. And when I pointed that out, I got a phone call saying, "If you don't desist immediately, I am going to bring a slander lawsuit against you." I said, "Well, go read the articles yourself, and you will see what they are." Now, I got the same phone call when I made the comment about he worked for a company that was under investigation by the FBI for criminals having ties to drug cartels. And he started that up, that I'm going to sue you, and I looked at him and said, "You've tried it twice. You failed. You want to try it the third time?" You know, so he went into another story about, "Oh, my life is in danger," and everything else. And I just kind of scratched my head and went, you know, "Okay, I won't say anything more." Because I knew everybody else and their grandmother was going to say something about it because of his constant lies. What really puzzled me, though, and what made me, you know, when you have somebody like this who wants to sit on the City Council, can you imagine his credibility in front of a jury? Can you imagine what they're going to think? And what makes matters worse is the other night, I don't know if it's the same thing here, but at the City Council, they don't open the chambers until 6:45, and you'll have staff wandering in and out, and we're asked not to go in. Last meeting, he decided to go in. He said, "Brian, we're supposed to stay out, because I don't, you know, staff to get in trouble for us being in there earlier." You know, and he goes, "I don't care." Kept walking. I said, "Why would I expect you to follow the rules?" And his reply to me was, "I don't have to. I have a disability." You have a disability that prevents you from following the rules? I looked at him and said, "Then why are you running for City Council? Because there's a whole lot of rules you have to follow up there." Can you imagine what's going to be said the first time we're involved in a lawsuit and he has to testify in court? Those things are going to be brought up, and he's going to look like an idiot, and we're going to lose millions of dollars. The other thing, too, how he takes credit for things. You know, that'd be like me, what he's saying about how he was saving tens of thousands of people. It'd be like me saying, you know, "I helped hundreds, if not thousands, of people when they were escaping the fall of Vietnam and Saigon." Be like me saying, "I put together an analysis that got Warner Brothers $2.5 billion from Toshiba and IBM." You know, the only difference is between what he's saying and what I would say if I was saying that is, I'm telling the truth. Because I was actually there doing some of those things, but all I did was fill out paperwork for people to get back in. All I did was put an Excel spreadsheet together that went off. But I don't run around trying to take credit for it. You know, that's what he's trying to do, that, so he was the player. And what I thought was funny, he flew out Wednesday, meaning he'd arrive Thursday morning, fly back Friday because he was home Saturday, from what I understand. What all could you do in that length of time? My God, if he'd stayed there for a week, there'd be no damage there for all the great things he's claimed he was doing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another card. William Elliott?
Good evening, Planning Commission. It's my first Planning Commission I've ever attended. It's kind of like a mini City Council meeting. First thing I want to say is, this is a business meeting, and this podium is not supposed to be used for campaigning. And whether Brian Gutierrez decides to attend a candidate forum put on by a partisan group, most of who are in this audience tonight. You know, Sherri Brilliant called my wife, made emails to her, basically begging her to attend this candidate forum put on by the Commission. And, you know, inquiries were made by more than one person. Who's the Commission? Who makes up this Commission? Who are these people? And Sherri Brilliant was the spokesperson. She was doing all the dirty work while everybody else hid in the shadows, like Jay Meter, like Steve Bennett, like John Shoemaker, who was a candidate, like Mario, I mean, the list goes on. And somebody asked Jerry Patrisse, "Jerry, who's on this Commission?" "Oh, gosh, I'm so busy. I don't have time to go into all of that. Please, just let us work." Meanwhile, Sherri Brilliant is talking about the transparency of this Commission, of this committee, excuse me. And there was no transparency. Every question that was asked at this forum was contrived and pre-written and in the tank by these people that made up this Commission. They took questions from the public, but none of the questions that came from the public were asked. Don Skirty says he helped out with the PA system. Well, you get Don Skirty and Steve Bennett involved in anything, and it just goes to hell, because the audio was so bad, almost nothing could be heard. It's very rich for these people that really this is based in hatred of Tony Wu. The anti-Asian hate in this community is unbelievable. It's off the charts. And these people in the audience, most of them, are members of that group, Sheena. The hatred of Tony Wu is off the charts, and it's nonstop. They tried to defeat him in the election. They failed. Teamsters Union poured in thousands of dollars, some say over $10,000, into the defeat Tony Wu campaign. They failed. Tony prevailed. Then they got involved with a recall campaign, with Steve Bennett involved, so you know how it's going to turn out. They were humiliated. They failed. And this is all about hatred of Tony Wu and their perceived alignment that Brian Gutierrez, the Commissioner, has with Mr. Wu. And they hate anyone who's connected to Tony Wu, and they go after them with a vengeance. And I think it's time we put all this divisiveness and hatred aside, all this anti-Asian hate. You know, they say, "Oh, it's not about Asian hatred. We have a very diverse group," says John Shoemaker, the white guy. Says every other member of the Commission, white guys, old white Republicans, every one of them. They were very sneaky, the way they did this little Commission. Sherri Brilliant lost all credibility. That former mayor of Glendora, that was the moderator. Please stop talking while I'm speaking.
Address the Planning Commission, please.
Can you ask them to stop talking while I'm speaking? Isn't that the job of the Chair?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Isn't that the job of the Chair?
Thank you. Your time is up.
And this is about Brian Tabatabai.
Your time is up.
And his Commissioner, who's the chairman of this Committee, of this Commission.
We have another card. JD?
Let my time start when he's done, was his admonition. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Madam Chair, point of order, I just want to make sure the clock starts
Thank you.
appropriately.
Correct.
Can we reset the clock?
Five minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reason I step up to the mic tonight, yes, I too have heard the rumor, and I guess my only question I would have for you, Mr. Gutierrez, is, you said you were deployed. Who deployed you? Red Cross? Who actually deployed you to this? God's work. The real reason I step up here tonight is because of the homeless situation in West Covina. It is a growing problem that is not being addressed neither by the Planning Commission nor the City Council. The attempt that Councilman Brian Tabatabai attempted, some disliked it greatly, others not so much. Some loved it, but it was an effort to do something. What we did prior to that, what we've done since then, is zero. Our City Council has sat on their hands and done nothing. The vagrancy that exists at Five Star continues to exist there. That hotel will continue to rent those rooms, because vouchers will continue to be issued by the County of Los Angeles through the Cal Works program, through the General Relief program, and that vagrancy will continue to grow. This city had the opportunity to make a difference for the sake of that hotel operator. He would have received county money that would have helped his business. So in his eyes, I'm sure this city is very unfriendly to business. You have, on the other hand, its neighbors who keep running into the City Council saying, "Do something." We continue to have the problem. The homeless continue to be a threat to our customers, continue to create a threat to the community. Nothing's been done. I find that analogous to Rebel Yale, where his livelihood was pulled, and this Commission was asking itself, "Well, why weren't we more proactive? Why did we wait until the last minute and have to pull this man's permit?" I'm asking the same question tonight. What has this Commission done with regards to the Five Star Hotel? Have this, Madam Chair, maybe you can get an answer for me tonight. Has this Commission received reports from code enforcement, from police, from fire department with regards to the number of violations, the number of arrests? Has this Commission done any work to try to be proactive and prevent this other business from going down the drain like Fridays, Walmart? Who's next? You are the Planning Commission. You need to stop playing politics and start concentrating on how to take action that will benefit the businesses that pay the taxes, collect the taxes to run this city. Enough of this child's play. Enough of getting up, going to the restroom because John Shoemaker comes up here, or this gentleman watching, looking down at his telephone. Hey, you can look down, you can look up. I'm not really referring to you. I'm just making an example. You need to take your duties a little more serious, honestly, because you need to hold the police, the fire department, now code enforcement accountable to make sure that the quality of life issues that we all depend on are being enforced. And they're obviously not being enforced at the Five Star Hotel. So, Madam Chair, I'm hoping that tonight either your city staff, through you, or maybe you yourself, can provide an answer to my question as to whether you are now being proactive in trying to prevent another business from burning down in terms of the services it provides to the patrons. The homeless are not going to go away. Mr. Gutierrez, if you have a better solution for helping the homeless problem, then provide it. Stop knocking down other people's solutions unless you have one better. Nothing is being done, and the homeless problem continues to grow exponentially. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another card. Dan Tran?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dan Tran, and I'm very hopeful that I'm going to be your next State Assemblyman for District 48. And I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I hear the frustration of the community and stuff like that, and I want to make sure that I engage in adding a solution to the problem. You know, there's issues that the community has, there's issues that City Council has, the Planning Commission has, and hopefully we can bridge that gap so that we can make West Covina move forward. So I just wanted to come up and, you know, introduce myself and, you know, let people know that, you know what, we can complain. And you know what, being in public office and campaigning for the past year, I see the frustrations that the community has and how it is when you're in public office. I mean, I could show you the emails and text messages I get every day from people that ask me, "What do I think about this and that?" And, you know, I wish I could give an answer for everything, but you know what? I want to be a contribution to the solution. I know it's tough being up here, and I want you guys to know that when elected in office, that I plan to bridge the gap and bring solutions to this so that we can move forward. I mean, you know what, there's issues, yes, I get that, but you know what? We can't just keep complaining and complaining and complaining and people getting upset. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I look forward to working with whoever's sitting in the seat in City Council come after November 5th. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more public hearing oral comment cards. At this time, we're going to close the oral comments. We now are going to move on.
Madam Chair, if I may respond to some of the comments that were made? If that's fine, okay. So, just wanted to start off by saying, I think Dr. Mark Dr. King once said, "Returning hate for hate multi- hate for hate multiplies, multiplies hate, adding deeper darkness to a night already devoid of stars. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that, that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said. I think the camera's messed up. So I would like to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight just to see me. That's a great honor for me to have that and thank you for coming to see me tonight. I'm honored and, but, you know, lies of lies have to come with truth. And so I think we heard from Mario and JD about where was I at on the day of the forum? And I would like to commend Sherri for her hard work for, for making that event possible that day. And, and unfortunately, I, I was in town earlier that day and I had the opportunity to visit our seniors, but later that night I had a flight and, and, and that flight was with, with American Airlines. You can't see it on here, but it was with American Airlines and I had to fly back to a disaster zone. And so I am an emergency management specialist. I respond to national disasters and I help people most in need when their homes are destroyed and are flattened out. And, and so I, I had a flight that day unfortunately and I had to fly back because it's a deployment order. Let's see, we have, we heard from Mr. Steve Bennett. I'm confused. I thought you were running for school board, but we'll pass that. And then we move on to Mr. John Shoemaker. I'll just leave it by as how many calls of police service calls have gone to your house for misconduct or disturbance of the peace? Lastly, we heard from JD about my homeless plan. Unfortunately, I'm here tonight to do the business of the people as a planning commissioner and I'm not here to campaign. So I will not go into my campaign homeless plan tonight because unfortunately, this is a government.
Public, please be quiet while he's speaking. Excuse me, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We're going to reconvene now.
Yeah, I'll just finish off where I was stating and that was, I believe, our resident JD asked about a homeless plan. And unfortunately, since we're at a, a government facility and because this is the business of the people of a planning commission, I will not be going into my campaign promises here tonight. And I'll again, just leave off the last statement I'll make tonight is what, what someone who I, my role model, I mentor growing up in the foster care system, coming from nothing, was Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and that's returning hate.
Can you please?
Returning, well, my mentor, Dr. Martin Luther King once said, returning hate for hate multiplies hate. So again, thank each and every one of you for coming tonight just to see me. Thank you. It's an honor.
Okay, okay. Let's call order. All right. Okay, we're going on now. We have our first.
If I have one more comment, please. So the commission here, we are not mind readers. There's, if there's no communication with the enforcement, if they're communicating to staff and they're not communicating to the commission, we are, have no knowledge of what is happening out there. I have requested for it to be agendized probably two months ago to have some kind of implemented protocol, some kind of logs that we can see, even to make them public, to meet, have them be on the West Covina website for the residents to see, but we have not seen that yet.
Okay, we're going to move on to our public hearing as the applicants are waiting to have their matter considered. Joanne, who will be giving the report for this evening?
Assistant Planner Jerry Rivera will be delivering the staff report.
Okay, we're going to start with conditional use permit number 24-07. It's a categorical exemption. The applicant is Sue Heefon and the location is 112 Plaza Drive, Suite 639. They are requesting a conditional use permit to allow a massage parlor, Relax Station, to be located within an existing tenant space at the Passit, um, excuse me, Plaza West Covina Mall in the urban center zone of the downtown planning code.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Honorable Chair. This is conditional use permit number 24-07 for Relax Station. I would like to give a little background. The zone of the subject site is urban center zone and is located within the downtown. The location is located between West Covina Parkway, Sunset Avenue, the San Bernardino Freeway and Vincent Avenue, and the surrounding uses are commercial. The following pictures above are of the existing unit at 112 Plaza Drive, the mall. The unit number is 639. And then we have right here pictures of Relax Station. So Relax Station is a chain of massage parlors and these are existing examples of what they would like to bring to West Covina. So one of the key design elements is the proposed massage, for the proposed massage parlor at the mall is the use of pony walls. These are half-height walls that create a more open and transparent environment, ensuring a professional and welcoming atmosphere. And this layout ensures that the space feels both inviting and safe, giving clients confidence in the high standards of their services. And Relax Station is committed to the transparency and professionalism and this sets them apart from any negative stereotypes often associated with massage parlors, making it a reputable and trusted establishment within the mall. This is the floor plan that was provided. The yellow color is the defined area that is currently being used for storage. Blue color is the restroom. The green is the cashier. And this is the site plan that was provided.
Let's take a break. I don't know.
The yellow color is the unit that will.
Wait on. Recess.
Hello. All right. Um, so this is a site plan that was provided. The yellow color is the unit that will be used for the massage. And then the services provided are chair massage, table massage, and foot reflexology. For the staff, there are three employees at any given time. Business hours are the mall hours, Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Friday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Planning staff recommends adopting resolution number 24-6151, approving conditional use permit number 24-07. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me or the applicant. The applicant is present. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the, for staff? Okay, if not, then we're going to open the public hearing. We have a card from Chris Lynn.
Good evening, everyone. It's a great honor for me to be here. I'm Chris. I'm with Relax Station. So we are a little franchise but family-owned business and we really want to expand our business into West Covina, which we think is going to benefit the community by giving them this great relaxing massage services. And, and our purpose is to get them recharged so they go out and shop and eat again. So yeah, looking forward to this opportunity. It's our great honor to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Okay. Closing the public hearing. Now we have discussion among the commission. Commissioner Bresser, do you have anything?
No.
Commissioner Heng?
No.
Commissioner Lewis? Commissioner Gutierrez?
I'll just, I'll just ask, I know there's some hours listed, but how about for holiday hours? Should we, should we make sure we add details to that, that they could, they could open later for, depending on the holiday schedule for the mall? Is there something they want to add to the language or?
In the condition of approval, we, we added that they're only going to be open when the mall is, during mall hours.
Okay, perfect. Okay, sounds good.
Were there any other questions? Okay, I just had one comment under the resolution for the project. I think under number 5D. I think the certification agency is the California Massage Therapy Council, like our city council. So I think the computer may have thought with therapists, may have thought the other Seeing no further comments, are we going to have a motion now on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm second.
Okay, properly moved in second. Joanne, can you do the roll call?
Commissioner Bresser?
Aye.
Commissioner Heng? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
But the record show the item's been approved 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you. There'll be a 10-day waiting period until the decision is final. If anyone wishes to appeal, they can do so in writing by contacting our city clerk's office within 10 days. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we don't have any other public hearing items. Commissioners, do you have any comments or any reports to make at this time?
I would like to wish my mother, Rosa Maria Rocha, a hundredth, happy 100th birthday today. This is my mom in her, I want to say 19, late 1940s. She's beautiful today as she was when she took this picture and she's been a resident of West Covina, a proud resident since 1970.
Wow. Congratulations.
Happy birthday, Mom.
Happy birthday.
Felicidades.
Oh, nice.
Thank you. Well, I also would like to know if the city can, maybe we can get her a cert of, a certificate or proclamation for her birthday, her 100th birthday, please.
I'll make a note of that and I'll have the city, the city manager check with the mayor for the resolution at the city council meeting.
Thank you.
Nice. So now we are at the point in our meeting. Does the community development director have a report?
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to inform the planning commission that we received a letter from, from HCD in regards to our housing element stating that our housing element, that the current draft is now in comply, in compliance with all state law. And the certification would be pending some, some minor text, text amendments in, in the development code. So we're, we're working on doing the, the text amendments that the state had asked and then after that we would get the certification for our housing element.
Very good. Good to hear. Very good to hear.
And also, I'd also like to inform the planning commission at the, well, at the July planning commission, planning commission meeting, there were, there was, I'm sorry, in the August planning commission meeting, there was direction to staff to take back the item regarding the Five Star for a report on the cause of service and also additional item, additional information for the other motels within five months from that. So that would be going to the planning commission in January, in either late January or early
Okay, thank you.
That concludes the community development director report.
Okay, were there any city council actions that you wanted to report on?
No city council actions.
Okay. That being the case, we'd like to adjourn this particular planning commission meeting in the honor of Livy's mother.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
100 years.
Thank you. Now she's as old as West Covina.